I'm here, I'll be on mute.
Hello.
Hi.
Get my thing together here.
We all here?
Here. Wow. We have a quorum. Is that Mike Iacampo? Seven oh two, we have a quorum, you want to get started?
Yep.
Eddie, I planted one hundred and forty-four seeds.
Oh my gosh, Joe. State law only allows you to grow three marijuana plants, Joe, not, not a hundred and forty. Oh, you mean pepper plants? Oh, sorry.
I'm, I'm way past marijuana.
I'm psyched, I really am.
Yeah, I picked up some new seeds from a different place, I had to go to a different place. Biker Billy's, but uh, I should have a good crock.
Been great. I mailed down Matt two jars of hot peppers that we grew last year, you know?
Yeah.
He's down in Nashville, so I mailed, sent him some, so he could have it. So that's all your pep, those are all your pepper plants.
Oh, that's great, that's good. Alright, so uh, what do we have here? It's seven oh two, we've started the meeting, general discussion, I don't think anybody's around here but us, correct? So no general discussion. Approval of minutes from two twenty-eight twenty-two? Can we approve those?
I moved that they'd be approved.
Alright, I second. And, we're on to ARPA discussion and reports.
Right. Well, since Stuart's not here, I guess I'll take the lead on this.
Alright.
I went to the last ARPA meeting, it was a town meeting, not just a ARPA committee meeting, and so they voted on a lot of things, they, I had the sheet, see if I still have it, oh here it is. Um, so, they were voting on a second ambulance for the fire department. Special air packs for the fire department. A generator for public works. Pre, the premium pay for health services staff. I think that's to increase salary and bring someone else in. Or no, to raise the hours of the human services assistant. Radios for fire departments, radios for public works. Small business and nonprofit assistance program. And, the other one is air conditioning for the band room, so there is a large sum of money associated with every one of these things, I obviously didn't read them. Almost everything got approved. The only, the only thing that I think that they did not approve was the twenty thousand dollars for the air conditioning at the hall school band room. And I think they didn't go through with that because there might need to be more work that need to be done, that they might tie in somewhere else. But essentially the ARPA funding came in two waves. I think it's like eight hundred and seventy-five thousand per wave. So they basically spent the entirety of the first wave in this one meeting.
Wow.
Yeah.
And we weren't part of that?
No. So I'm really hoping that we're part of the next one.
Well, that sounds like all big ticket items, I know those radios alone were a couple hundred grand, weren't they?
Um, right, hang on a second. Rate, two hun, uh, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for radios for fire department. Thirty-eight thousand dollars for radios for public works. The, the air packs were a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Wow.
Yeah, but so, a lot of these things like needed to be done, I guess, like the air pack thing, tho, those have expiration date.
Right, right, I heard that.
So that needed to be done now, and I guess there was also like a price differential, like if they did it now, they could get it for ten thousand dollars less than even next month, something like that, so it was time sensitive with a lot of these things.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much all that happened in ARPA. The next meeting, I believe, is like a regular meeting again. Between just the ARPA commission members. And I'm, I'm gonna go to that one, I went to this one because I thought I might be able to speak, but that there's no time to talk at these meetings, like the, the town ones, you know? The ones that happen at night, so that one I'm gonna go to and I'm gonna really emphasize, you know, that drainage problem. You know, I took a, I have like twenty pictures, I sent, I sent the pictures to a couple of the a couple people, I sent them to Christina. And I send them to Mike, oh, I can't believe, I can't remember his name. The chairman of the board of finance.
McCouch?
McCou, yeah, Mike McCou. And even though he's not on the ARPA committee, it was suggested to me that I present the problem to the board of finance also, since it's a, it's a real safety issue, that's kind of where I, I, I should have went that way from the beginning when I introduced the project because I think a lot of people just looked at it and they were like, it's drainage, who cares? But they didn't really see that it is a safety issue, you know, with a fourth of the track being glare ice in the winter or slippery mud in spring, summertime. So that's, that's what I'm gonna emphasize at this next meeting. So hopefully that and the lights can, can be passed, I think the lights, people want the lights, so I think that's gonna go through without a problem. I'm hoping after I speak that people will see the, the importance of, of the drainage. And if for some reason it doesn't get passed, this could be like an emergency fix from the board of finance too, because I guess they can, they can step in at times and just hand over money to fix a huge problem.
Okay.
So.
When's the next round of ARPA money, next year?
Uh, I'm not sure, it may have even been like, yep, you have to spend the first part to get the second part, I'm not sure, to be honest with you, but I know that the next meeting, they're gonna be spending it whether they have it or not, if you know what I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, I guess that's all good stuff.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's ARPA.
Yeah.
But we're still going with those three projects that we talked about, right, the roof over the weights, the lights, and the drainage.
Yeah, oh, I, well, I guess I should say this, I actually Jenny and I changed what we were asking for, for summer camp, so initially we had like a low number. We were kind of urged to ask for more and let them sort it out, if you know what I mean, so we would like to get money for the next few years for summer camp to help cover the cost of that. So we asked for much more than that over a period of time, we'll, we'll see what happens there.
As ARPA money?
Yeah.
And that's split between the two departments?
Basically, that's what would end up happening, is we, whatever money we get would split between both, just to cover the cost.
Alright.
Good.
That's for summer camp, for three years, you think?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think we've asked for I should know this. We may have asked for thirteen thousand for the first year, and then ten for the next year, and then ten for the year after that.
I think I saw that request, but it was for Health and Human Services, so that was requested for her?
Well, she put the request in.
Okay.
But it's for both of us, like, we both didn't fill one out.
Gotcha. Okay. Alright, cool, what else for ARPA?
That's, that's all I got.
Alright, Wellington Day, oh boy. What is Wellington Day? Did they move it to the end?
It was August last time.
Yeah, usually it's like Memorial Day, but they moved it to the end of the summer, right?
It's the Saturday before Memorial Day, I believe.
Oh, that's how they're doing it this year?
Yeah, I think that's how it used to be in the past.
Yeah, it was.
So, yeah, so I, I
So that would be the
Go ahead.
That'd be the twenty-first. If, if the last Sat, wait, if the last Saturday is the twenty-eighth, then it'd be the twenty-first of May.
Okay. So what are we gonna do, hamburgers and hot dogs?
So I, um, at the meeting that I went to for Wellington Day, it, it was said that Parks and Rec would usually throw some sort of sporting event, since it's been at River Road. So, I think she said the last time that we did something there, it was like a shooting competition, so you had to pay like two bucks to enter or something. And the winner got like movie tickets, that's what she recalls as to what Parks and Rec did at Wellington Day.
That was a long time ago, I think.
But I was gonna say, I like that idea, I think it's a good idea, and I think it's something i- if Wellington Day is four hours, I think she's saying it's four hours, we could have four waves of it. You know, at the top of the hour, each time, all you gotta do is go buy a couple movie ti, or, you know, you can even buy buy them in pairs of two, you know? You get two movie tickets if you, if you're the top scorer, you know, that's something we could do four times, and we could even set up some other stuff on the side, too.
Are we gonna do like three on threes, or you're gonna do, it's gonna be a shooting competition?
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking, I was thinking a shooting competition.
But can I also, before we get to Can I interject? Last Wellington Day was, I guess, in, in August this last year because of the pandemic, probably.
Right, no, I think you're right, I didn't go.
Isn't that where we that's where we did the burgers, it was me, it was, I think it was Mike Panati. Yeah, and we were plenty busy, I don't know, I mean, unless we get a lot more, you know, other less other people are free, we're not gonna have any much manpower for this.
My finger's still even thawed out from that job.
All those frozen burgers. I mean, that's a full-time thing, setting up all that stuff. Serving everybody, cleaning up afterwards, just a lot, it's a whole day. And I, I think it's great if we could do some of these other things that you're suggesting, Alan, I just, I'm just saying that we, we need to talk about manpower well in advance if we're gonna do something like that, that's all.
But is Alan talking about doing both things, or just the basketball and somebody else does burgers and dogs?
She said somebody else did food, to be honest with you.
We did food last time. But I know, and that basketball thing happened years ago, that was probably, who did that, Greg?
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
Yeah. But, but that's a fine thing to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, let, somebody else can do hamburgers and hot dogs, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm not sure who, but somebody could. The fire department used to do all the food, they haven't done it in a while.
That's because it was right next to their building.
Right, but they could still bring out a barbecue bit.
Yeah, so Alan, before we get too into it, let's at the next meeting or whatever, where, when you discuss this, let's nail down who's doing what. Because if we're doing the burgers and dogs, we're gonna be plenty busy, if we're doing the other, then fine, just let's get that, let's get that out there first. I thought we were gonna be doing the cooking, I don't care.
You want me to just throw it out there but not volunteer it? Who's doing the cooking this year?
Yeah, if somebody else wants to cook, that's fine, I, I mean, it's kind of a moneymaker, but not an enormous one.
Not really, yeah, we didn't make much money on that.
That's a lot of work.
You know what I was
We thought we made a lot of money, and then we found out how much we paid, it was like, really?
Maybe Mike Iacampo took all that money to warm his hands back up, made a fire.
I actually have an, an idea that you guys might like, if you're talking about cooking food, what about buying one of those like steamers that you cook hot dogs in, you ever seen them, a hot dog steamer?
Yeah.
I don't think they're too much money, and it's, you know, it basically runs itself, toss them in there, it's done, and pu, you could put it in a bun and be done.
My guess though is if someone's gonna cook by the refreshment stand, they're gonna do all that. So we should, we should, if we're gonna do a sports thing, because we're, you know, Parks and Rec, that's cool. But whoever you talk to about this whole thing, do you guys have a meeting downtown about who does what?
Well, we, so we've only had one meeting so far. And I, you know, being totally new to it, I was just, you know, hey, tell me about it, tell me about it, what did Parks and Rec do, so she's the one that said you know, the basketball thing, and I, I liked that idea, I thought it was a good idea. And I thought she said somebody else I think her name might be Melissa.
Okay.
Not sure, she's run it for, she's the same person who's run it for a long time.
Yeah, I'm fine with the basketball thing, if somebody else wants to cook, you're alright with that, Eddie, right?
Of course.
I'm not taking the bait on what you said, Joe, on that accusation, but I can't believe when they said that money disappeared, I, I thought you were spearheading the the surveillance and investigation, Ed, I thought you were on that.
I did, I did, and I determined I determined that it just, we don't know what happened to the money, we just don't know, the tapes were erased, there was eighteen minutes of blank tape.
I think it's water under the bridge.
No, it's not, I lost precious time of my life. My, my fingers will never be the same.
I will guarantee you have wasted more time on less money in your lifetime than other subjects.
We, this is the thing. It's hard to nail down exactly how much food to get. And so you lose money when you end up buying a couple packs of hamburgers at whatever they cost, fifty, sixty bucks, I have no idea what they cost. Because I didn't buy them, I didn't go out and buy them, but that's the hard thing to figure out, how many, and I thought we had somewhat of a grip on it last year, but anyway, for the fu, for this coming year, but I'm more than happy to let someone else take out, take over the food. But I don't think we should be doing both, I mean, there's only so much we can do here.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I think we should do it, it's just difficult, that's all I'm saying.
It's one or the other, it's one or the other, and I'd rather do the basketball thing.
That's fine.
Better representation of Parks and Rec.
Okay, I'm good for that.
So now, Alan, it's up to you. Find out if somebody else wants to do burgers and dogs, because you gotta have food.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just throw it out there at the next meeting.
When is the next meeting?
There was supposed to be one last week, but it was canceled for some reason, I think maybe one woman couldn't be there, couldn't run it. So I don't think she set up a new time yet.
Okay.
For another one.
So we're pushing that.
Once we get that, once we know that, we can get into the other rest of it, okay?
And we're gonna have to move quick, we're gonna have to move quick.
Right, but we'll do either, but we won't do both, and we'll just get Mike some gloves. Alright, and, and we'll let Ed watch the money.
Actually Christina, Christina My, Milo did the money, wa, watched the money for us, she was very good.
Yeah, I trust her.
Very good, except their money disappeared.
Making some accusations there, Mike.
Well, where's the money?
I don't know, I wasn't there.
If it's, if it's not here, it must be somewhere else.
I bet wherever it is, it's gone.
I left a half hour before it ended, wasn't me.
Alright. So that, it's gonna be hoops or food? So Alan, talk to your
Take the hoops.
Yeah, I like the hoops.
I'll be on a baseball diamond somewhere.
Hopefully there.
No one plays there yet.
Is Little League happening there?
Hopefully, hopefully Mansfield teams are using it.
Are we gonna merge with them, or is that not happening?
Our kids can go to Mansfield or Stafford.
Okay.
And Mansfield was, was, I think Mansfield lost a field because they're doing some construction.
And they want to use our field?
I believe so, and then it makes it so that our kids don't have to drive all the way over to Southeast School.
Yeah, and then we're using that field for baseball, it'd be great.
But I haven't talked to anyone, I haven't talked to anyone about it, I just know that that was an original idea.
Be great to see a baseball or softball game tha, that day. You know, get some kids to play, or maybe if girls softball happens, or Hall School has a baseball team, or somebody wants to play baseball, that'd be kind of fun.
Yes.
Alright, so now, Alan's director's report.
Alright. Basketball finished up this month. The, the results of the Varsity High School Tournament were that they were allowed to play. So they had the they had the, the games in Marlboro, not Heburn. And I went there, and there were no incidents, so it was fine, everybody got to play, nothing happened, so that was good. I bought a new home plate for the TOB baseball field. Because the one that was there was horrible, and it had a big hole in it, and Anthony Eldridge told me that he thinks it's the same plate that was there when he was playing as a kid, so I bought, I bought a new one, it's a really nice one, so it should be around for a long time. Question, multiple questions, when should I get the portables out there? For, uh, uh, well, I mean, the the one at Hall's Pond is obvious, but River Road, when do the portables usually go out there?
I would imagine, anytime now, when are we gonna start? Like, when are they gonna have soccer down there, end of school?
End of next month.
And well, and when?
Next month.
End of April?
Yep.
You sure?
Yeah, so, I got a request in from we to you, field. We went back and forth. I, I had to get the field lined. Nobody does it.
Oh, who did it for you?
Nobody wants to do it, well, I paid Steve Folino, the Hall School custodian and a teacher. Can't remember his name right now, but I paid them to come out and do it, and I actually did it with them.
It came out nice.
We only got the outer line done, it took us two and a half hours, so.
I know, I know, I used to do it.
So we gotta go back and finish, we were gonna do it today, actually. But it was too cold and windy, so, we're gonna go back Thursday to actually finish it, but she wanted the lines on the field before we started. I moved the, the goals to the correct spot, because there's like four goals down there.
Yeah, I saw that, too small, too big.
Yep, so we put the big ones out there today. And so, I've been communicating back and forth about this, and then we sent another email that said they were planning on starting for thirty-one. So, that's the end of next month. But the original request had them starting this, this month, in March.
Right, that's, yeah. Hey, so, so what's your deal with her about re-lining?
Be lining the field?
Yeah, to keep up with the re-lining.
Well, I don't have a deal with her, I just assumed that it was my job to keep the field lined, so what I'm gonna do, since I hear how so much of a nightmare this is, I'm gonna invest in these special stakes that go in the ground. And they never come out, but it lets me know exactly where the, the lines go. So repainting it is a lot easier, but the stakes are expensive, but
Yeah, but, um, have you, have you been in a, in the storage shed?
Uh, which one?
Behind the, behind the Little League field.
No, I don't have a key for that.
Because I think there's a set in there, because Terry bought that system.
Oh.
So don't, before you buy, right, try, I mean, get access to that key?
It's a combo lock, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a combo lock, I think it is, yeah, and I don't even know what the code is now, it's been so long.
I can, I can look it up.
Okay, because I think there's, there's a system in there already, you know? Just so you know.
Ed. Where's that, someone wake up, Ed.
I'm here, what's up?
What year was Wellington founded?
Seventeen ninety-seven.
The combo to the lock is the year Wellington was founded. Oh, and you know what, and I wrote it, I wrote it on the shed in a corner, it's it sits engraved somewhere in one of the corners of that shed. If it's the same.
Well, we'll find out. Well, I mean, I could try and get in there.
Yeah, let, no, do that, because that system costs, costs us money and it's still there. I know exactly the system you're talking about, you drive the stakes in, it keeps the, yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
The internet says seventeen twenty-seven.
There you go, alright, um, alright, I'm gonna stop by there, see if I can see if it's still engraved.
So what's the combo then, one, seven, two, seven?
One, seven, two, seven.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, unless no one changed it.
Well, is it one, seven, twenty-seven, or is it one, seven?
It's a, it's a, it's a
Four rotary.
It's a rolling pin.
Right, right.
So what, no, that's, that's circular, there's four, there's four things you roll.
Right.
Okay.
Like a suitcase. Guys, what is it again, I'm gonna try.
Seventeen twenty-seven.
Seventeen twenty-seven, got it, okay.
Okay.
Realized we probably shouldn't have said all this over a, a meeting.
I mean, it's not like it's Fort Knox to Bronx in there, I don't think anybody would want anything.
And I don't, I don't think anybody's stupid in these meetings.
They do end up on YouTube, though.
Yeah. There's much better stuff on YouTube to watch.
So anyways
The sheds in Coventry, so.
Nice cover.
To, to finish, whether, whether we have the system or I go buy it, whatever, I'm gonna line that field so that we don't ever have to pay to do it again, all I'll have to do is because, you know, the hardest part is, is measuring, you know?
Yep, yep.
So then you just put a couple stakes in, line it, paint it, boom, and I'll know exactly where everything goes, so.
Where, where did you get the liner from?
Mansfield Supply.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Lights, when should we turn the lights back on at River Road?
You got the parking lot lights on, right?
Yeah.
And it's been pretty cold, I would imagine, maybe middle of April or April one. It's almost April.
That's in a couple days, yeah. Joe, just so you know, when I went by there, the other, you know, I go by every day, obviously. We had a warm spell. Kids are out there playing. They go right to that court. So yes, it's really good.
So I know, you know, burning the lights costs some money. You wanna do middle of April? We should, we should put a moratorium on it and then I can adjust the time clocks. They have, they're astronomical and they have a calendar on them, so I can just adjust that and then.
We can start May one, when kids are, more kids are out. I guess if you want, we can wait till May one.
Be a crummy weekend this weekend, I think.
I'll leave it up to you. It doesn't matter. Are you, does it have to be, what? Is the setting for all seven days or is it like you can set it on weekdays, one thing, and then weekends, another?
Yeah, we can do anything we want. So do we want?
You know what? Do you know what it's currently set for?
The same as the parking lot, except it turns off one hour earlier.
You know what that is?
Uh, it's, it's one half hour before sunset to ten o'clock for the courts and eleven o'clock for the parking, I think.
All right, so what, what are we on, mid-April? It makes. Yeah, it just makes more sense, I guess, when, I don't know, I don't know, I am. Most of the kids playing late or what, are late, they're usually a little older?
I would think so.
I mean, do you wait till May when they start to get out of college or what? I don't know. Maybe we're just.
What did we do last year? I know we tried to avoid, I mean, we, we shut them, I know people are asking for them now year round because once you get the, the whole loop lit up, they're gonna want it pretty much year round. But that's not gonna be basketball. That's gonna be like parking lights. So I think last year we shut off, when did we shut off last time?
We shut them off, uh, right in early November.
So let's, let's talk about it. Do we, from now on, we shut off the lights maybe the middle of November or November one?
I think we should shut them off earlier than that. Um.
November one seems reasonable.
Yeah.
Nice days in October.
There were still kids down there playing.
Yeah.
Over.
Yep.
They'll play, the lights are on. Somebody will go down there and shoot.
So let's say now, November one to April one? Or May one, or April fifteenth?
There you go, fifteenth.
Tax day. So we'll go November fifteenth to April fifteenth. How's that sound?
About November first?
Fine, I just changed it. November one to April fifteenth.
What, you're talking about April to November, not November to April?
Shut them off November one, turn them back on April fifteenth.
Got you, okay, yep.
But I, I think Alan's had some folks talk to him about the, uh, walking path. I think if people could have those on year round, they would like that. It seems crazy, but people are out there walking.
Well, I don't know. I mean, they might want it, but that doesn't mean we have the money for it, you know?
The parking lot lights stay on year round.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a done deal. That's liability and safety.
I wonder if we have, and I know, listen, I wonder if we have room for like a solar array out there somewhere. We could cover some of the electricity that we're burning.
Nah, that field's all used up.
Yeah, is there any room over in that, uh, section where that CLMP thing is cut out? Or is that all, is any of that?
It's not ours. That, that doesn't belong to us. I think we're pretty much the footprint of that space, aren't we, Al? Pretty much using that up.
No, I agree, but what about north of the track at the far end of the field where the soccer's played beyond the track? Is there a section there that we, we should look, just look, I'll look at it at some point.
There's a little bit of grass there, but.
There's wetland there and trees.
The only place you have room is on the roof of the pavilion.
Yeah, and you're not gonna get more than, you, you're gonna get nothing there for wattage. You're gonna do it, you need at least eight thousand watts. That's like the average. Yeah, no, yeah, eight thousand.
Okay. Yeah, no, it's not that big, Julian.
You, you could, you could see if the state would give us, uh, an electric charging station and then put up one of those rooftops that goes all the way down parking. Put solar on that, like the cops just didn't burn it. Yes, they did, yes. Yeah, that's a popular thing to do. Yeah.
Hey, Joe, I, I actually have written down here, um, so we have somebody renting the pavilion on, uh, April second. So we need power at the pavilion by then.
I'll turn the power back on. That's cool. I'll get one of the guys over there.
You just wanna do the, the lights at the same time, too?
Are they renting it?
Uh, the second, April second.
Oh, you're, you're pushing your lights on by thirteen days, Alan.
I know. Then you don't have to come out twice, you know?
All right. Okay. And, oh, that's, yeah, that's this weekend. Wow. How do you turn them back on? What do you, what, what, what is that? Magic. It's a lockout. There's a lockout and the breakers are turned off. Oh, okay. You had Joey turn a bunch of stuff off last year, right, Al?
Yeah.
I'll send Joey back there.
Okay, so we'll do that Friday?
Yeah, I'll see what I can do. Yeah, I'll email myself.
I can, I can shoot you a reminder, too.
I got it.
Okay, I won't. Uh, all right. Budget, okay, um, so I went to the, I've been going to all the budget meetings. And, um, the long and short of it is the finance committee, uh, supported the budget that we turned in and it ended up being ninety-six thousand dollars is what we would get from the town. So they approved it, but, you know, and I learned that, that actually doesn't mean too much because now it has to go to a town meeting and all this other stuff, so.
Just the town meeting. We'll make sure we all go and we'll vote in the positive.
Okay.
You're not gonna get two thousand townspeople with pitchforks and torches. You're gonna be lucky to get anybody at the meeting.
Oh, okay. I guess that's a good thing.
They only show up with the pitchforks when you wanna repair a school or.
Oh, okay, uh, that really. Camp, all right, uh, one good thing, interesting thing for camp. Uh, human services and, uh, I split the cost of a bounce house. So now we have a bounce house. Hopefully it will last for a couple of years and, you know, once a week, uh, we can set that up and the kids can have something special to do during one of those days.
Restore that thing.
Uh, it's just sitting on the floor right now in the office.
How big is it? How big is it deflated?
It's pretty big. And it's like, I don't know, three by six cylinder shape.
Oh, all right.
They came with a blower, too, though. So the thinking, the thinking was is that if the, if the bounce house doesn't last, we at least still have a blower so we can go buy another bouncing. So it's only five hundred bucks.
No chuckling. Sorry.
You guys only have one thing left. So the very last thing is, uh, I don't know if, um, you all remember, uh, one of the first meetings I was at, I, I mentioned, uh, a man, uh, Stephen Davis. His son passed away and he wanted to have, um, a bench put in at the, at the park. And we all said that, you know, that's fine, we can do that. So he called me again, um, because obviously it's been a while, you know, I'm, I'm waiting for it to warm up so that we can actually do that project. Um, he had a different suggestion that he just wanted me to run by you to see what you all thought. Instead of doing that, uh, what about naming the court after his son?
I don't know. I mean, the park is already named after somebody. Kevin Legear or what's that kid's name?
Yeah, like the baseball field, the baseball field or something. I don't know, but, um, just what? Who is, who is again that, who passed away and? His name, his son's name is Isaac, I think. Um, I guess he, like, he played there all the time, I guess. He was a big basketball guy. He played there all the time. He was on his school team. Everybody knew him. Real good kid. Um, that's, that's who he was. So, yeah, I mean, he's, he's, he, he made sure to, you know, express that. You know, it's, he's just spitballing, you know, he's, he doesn't wanna put any pressure or anything, but if everybody thought that was a good idea, it would, he thought that would be a, a good alternative to a bench if we wanted to go that route. So figured I'd ask.
What would he do? Put up a plaque that says Stephen Davis or what was his name, Isaiah?
Isaac, I, I, Isaac, Isaac Davis.
Memorial.
In the whole field, the whole River Road, what, what, what does he want? Just the basketball court, just the basketball court. So I guess, yeah, it would just turn into a, a plaque, uh, that we could just put at the end of the court.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem with that. I, I, we can all talk about it and email around, but. Is there a bench there you can put a plaque on or no?
We'd have to put another bench down. That's what he originally wanted to do, was put down another bench with a plaque.
But he doesn't wanna do a bench now. He wants to just commemorate.
He's, he, he'll still do the bench if, like, we didn't do the court naming. You know? Well, I like the bench idea better than the court.
Bench is more functional.
Yeah.
At least.
I, 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 I'm, I'm fine with the court, but whatever you wanna do. I get, why do you want, I, I get what he's looking for because you'll see a plaque more often that says his name, Isaac's name, and, you know, the court is named after him, but.
Where would that plaque go? On a rock, another rock?
Hmm, I don't know, probably on a signpost.
Can we just put it right in on the court, like, you know how there's like space between the, the sideline and then the grass? Like somewhere near the edge over there? Is that possible? Can you put one of those in on already existing concrete?
Like, paint it onto the court?
Paint it, but is there a way to put, put a plaque, like an already made metal plaque on there somehow?
Probably chisel, you could probably chisel it in.
So right, it'd be a, it'd be a trip hazard if you just had a plaque there.
You could probably chisel it in, but i- isn't the whole thing painted?
Yeah, I don't think I'd put anything on the court and, and disturb the, the court. Because we had it sealed and painted and it must be, I don't think they'd want you to do that. Dig into the court? I think. What do you think, Mike? You compromising the court.
Well, I'm just thinking if we ever had a resurface, I mean, it's gotta be removable. It's gotta be screws. You'd screw it down. Why don't we put in another bench and put the name on it?
Yeah, I like that idea better.
Okay.
That's my opinion. I just think it's more functional.
Kind of a circular discussion.
I don't think he'll mind, you know?
Everybody's in favor of bench? Go bench? Yeah, benches are good. Betches are good. Okay. Let's do bench is what I just wrote.
We need somewhere to take a nap when we're done flipping burgers.
With cushions, with cushions. With cushions.
All right, yeah, that's, that's all I got for director's report.
All right, I'm, I'm guessing there's no old business. Unless you wanna talk about the money that got stolen at the, uh, barbecue again.
Well, yeah, let me say something, guys. I know we like to kid around, but there was no money stolen. This goes on public record. This gets posted on the internet and we're talking about money being stolen and I don't know what you.
I don't think any money was stolen.
All right, then let's drop it.
Fine.
I'm, I'm just, just telling you, we, if, if it was just us meeting like the old days where none of this went online, there's no record of it. It'd be a different story. I don't want someone coming up to me, you know, at some point. Anyway, I have enough said.
I think it was all in fun and no one thinks that any money was taken. So any new business? I don't think so. No?
Nope.
And? Anybody else got a comment?
Nope.
Stuart, I think, said he was gonna go to the next ARPA meeting.
Yeah, he sent, he did send an email saying he couldn't make it and he, he said what, much of what Alan said in the email to all of us.
I'd like to find out when the next round of ARPA money's coming up. Just, you know, so we don't get dusted.
Yeah. Well, I think it, assuming it's gonna be next Monday because it's like every two weeks they have a meeting. And I remember going to the meeting last week, so that would make the next meeting next week.
And have they gotten this eight hundred thousand dollars or that hasn't happened?
They already, yeah, they, they got it. They already have the first batch of money. And then they just spent all the money.
Wow.
I was, yeah, I was surprised at how quickly it went. Like, one more meeting like that and it's gone.
Yeah, but that's all the big ticket stuff. I, right after that, what's left? Isn't it all smaller stuff like us?
I don't know. I honestly don't know. Um, the only stuff that I, that I knew there, that were, they were asking for was the ambulance, um, funding for small businesses and then the stuff that we want. That's the only stuff I knew because I, I only went to one meeting.
And it's half and half, so there's another eight hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm guessing Stuart's gonna let us know next meeting.
Hmm.
So, seven forty-eight, adjourn? Somebody wanna make a motion?
So moved.
Mikey, you gonna second?
I'll say it.
All right, gentlemen, have a good rest of the week. All right, Alan. Alan, you're doing a great job. Thank you very much.
No problem, thanks.
All right, take it easy, guys.
Have a good one.
Good night, everybody. See ya.